Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Okay, we're live.
All right. Good morning. I'd like to call this public hearing for March 11th, 2022 to order. I don't have any opening statements. If my ranking members do, I'd be happy to hear from you, Representative Fishburne.
Thank you. Good morning and welcome to all.
Thank you, Representative Fishby. Senator Kissel.
Good morning, Chairman Winfield. Well, I just want the members of the committee as well as the entire state of Connecticut to know that it is your birthday. So illustrious Chair of Judiciary, almighty leader, happy birthday.
Thank you, Senator Kissel. Thank you very much. All right, we will move into the public hearing testimony with members of the public testifying. We will begin with Christine Ellie. Is Christine here?
She is not here yet. The first one on the list that we have that's here is Scott Comissar.
Okay, we'll go right to Scott Comissar then. Scott Comissar, you are up. You may provide us with your testimony for the members of the public. I think you know this, but you get three minutes. There is a timer that will appear and I will let you know if you don't see it and ask you to wrap up. You may proceed.
Thank you, Senator, and good morning, Senators and Representatives. I appreciate the opportunity to speak this morning. I'm here concerning number forty-eight on the list, the House Judiciary Bill Number sixty-one, the resolution to confirm the decision of the Claims Commissioner to deny the claim of Susan Cardinal. I'm here to testify against that on the basis that the magistrate, the Claims Commissioner's magistrate, used the wrong legal standard to decide this case. As you know, under Statute four dash one sixty A, the inquiry for the Claims Commissioner or her magistrate is to decide whether the state were a private person could be liable, not is liable, not is likely to be liable, but simply could be liable. And that is so, such as in this case where there is a genuine issue of material fact. I'm quite confident, as I sit here, that no court, no Superior Court would ever grant a motion for summary judgment on the facts that were presented in this case. Yet that is essentially what the magistrate did after usurping the role of the judge and jury by deciding, instead of simply examining the evidence, to decide whether the state could be liable. The magistrate gave undue weight to certain evidence, discounted other evidence, and concluded that the claimant Susan Cardinal would be unable to prove her case. This is improper. And very briefly, I just want to remind the 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 members that this concerns an incident motor vehicle collision that occurred on June twenty-ninth of two thousand and fifteen. Her claim was filed October twenty-sixth of two thousand and fifteen. The magistrate's hearing occurred two years later on May nineteenth, two thousand and seventeen, but we didn't get a decision until July twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one. And that decision was wrong. This was a a motor vehicle accident where the claimant was attempting to turn onto the I ninety-five on-ramp while heading west on Route Two. A state worker walked during at a construction site, walked in front of her path of travel as she was turning onto the exit ramp. She stopped to avoid hitting the the worker who was a pedestrian in the road, and her vehicle was struck by an an eastbound vehicle on Route Two. She suffered permanent injuries as a result of this collision. She's waited years for her day in court, and she deserves it. I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, Mr. Commissar. Senator Kissel.
Thank you very much, Chairman Winfield. Thank you, sir, for coming and testifying this morning. I can speak from my experience on the committee, just for myself, that, to me, it's always important when it's a disputed claim that someone actually comes and testifies. It sounds to me that all we need here is a colorable claim, very low bar. But I would just think, just based on my my private practice experience and long ago, I did do a number of motor vehicle accidents, some very serious. But typically, there's some issue if there's two cars that collide. And so I I think that, you know, if that is indeed the case, and you have stated a colorable claim, at least enough to get past this particular hurdle. So I don't know if I direct my question to to you, to you, Chairman Winfield or LCO. If we reverse the essential dismissal of the Claims Commissioner or the magistrate, does that mean that this matter then goes to the Superior Court, or does it go back to the Claims Commissioner? I just don't know the procedural posture, because I I tend to agree with everything that he stated, assuming that I can confirm that that's the standard that should have been determinative.
I think that's a question LCO might be able to assist with.
Good morning, everyone. Bill O'Shea, LCO Attorney.
Good morning, Bill.
Good morning, Senator. With respect to the testimony that we've just heard, the committee would have the option in this case to allow this claimant to bring their case in the Superior Court. So the resolution could be changed in such a way as to give the claimant permission to sue in the Superior Court.
Thank you, Counselor O'Shea. I appreciate that. I will just state, and I know that we, as a committee, have to discuss this later on, but I'm just going to put on the record right now, Mr. Chair and to the other members of the committee. I just feel, and we all are very cognizant of the fact, that the time period for claims in Connecticut is just horrendous. And we've tried year in and year out, additional resources, additional folks to help the Claims Commissioner. It's outrageous, and it's an embarrassment. And so I'm just going to say right now, given the timeframe that this initial took place, initial accident took place in two thousand and fifteen, like seven years ago, I I would be voting and pushing to have this matter go straight to the Superior Court and let a Superior Court judge determine the right standard and let these people have their day in court. So that's just my position. But I I'm just not happy with our claims situation in the state of Connecticut. And I just don't understand why this is persisting, but that's a that's a different fight for another day. But I'm very sympathetic to this particular gentleman and his client. And thank you very much, Attorney O'Shea, for giving us that always pithy advice. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kissel. Representative Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. Good morning, Scott. How are you?
Good morning, sir. Fine. How are you?
Good. So I just want to go back. You gave us the timeline a bit quickly. I was taking notes. The accident happened when?
The accident itself was June twenty-ninth of two thousand and fifteen.
Okay. And when was the claim filed?
The claim was filed October twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen, about four months later.
And from there, what was the next action by the Claims Commissioner's office?
It was set down for a hearing before the magistrate, which occurred May nineteenth of two thousand and seventeen.
In the meantime, what was going on, to your knowledge?
To my knowledge, and and someone else in my office was handling it at that time. To my knowledge, suit was filed in the Superior Court against the driver, that the oncoming vehicle. That case has essentially been held in abeyance while waiting all of these years for a decision by the Claims Commissioner. Because the assuming that the the facts alleged by the claimant were true, the state worker who walked into the road was the proximate cause of the collision, or certainly a proximate cause of the collision, a substantial factor in causing this collision. Both it was undisputed that our client had had more than enough time to make and complete her turn onto the onto the on-ramp. She stopped short because someone walked in front of her vehicle. Her vehicle was not entirely out of the travel portion of of Route Two, and and she was hit in the back end, spinning the vehicle around and suffering permanent injuries as a result of the collision. So that case has been on hold. That case is is scheduled for trial now in September of this year. Obviously, the pandemic added a certain amount of time to to the penancy of the action. But, you know, she just, she wants her day in court, and I don't think that's too much to ask. Whether whether she wins or loses is another story, but the magistrate took it upon himself to make that decision.
Yeah, understood. And then so the hearing happened in two thousand and seventeen solely on the issue of whether or not there was a recognizable claim against the state.
Right, right. He issued a memorandum of decision on July twenty-third of two thousand and twenty-one.
And was any discovery done with regard to any that underlying claim or thought that there may not be liability by the state?
I believe there was a certain amount of discovery in the Claims Commissioner proceeding, you know, exchange of medical records and witness statements and so forth. There was witnesses did testify at the hearing. As far as the lawsuit in Superior Court, there has been extensive discovery as well. The the other driver was deposed, our client was deposed, other witnesses. The the defendant driver in our lawsuit has since died. His estate is now substituted in the lawsuit. So there there has been discovery at at the commission level as well as the Superior Court.
And I'm just trying to, so those depositions and things that happened were solely as a result of the claim process, not the Superior Court process? Is that fair?
No, I think I think discovery occurred in both forms, is my understanding. And I and I can't. I I could tell you that the the depositions occurred in the in the state court proceeding and were, I believe, were used in the hearing, although I I could be mistaken.
Yeah, I'm just trying to get to why this stuff is taking so long. So, you know, it it seems like a really easy issue for the Claims Commissioner to dispose of, you know. You file a piece of paper that says a state worker walked into the road and caused an accident. What discovery do you need, other than an affirmation that that is what you believe happened?
Right.
I mean, there's there's utter lack of attention to these these matters, and I'm very distressed. Scott, did you submit anything in writing that comports with what you testified to here today?
I myself did not. My associate, who was handling the claim, did did submit written comments. Once we got the decision, the Commissioner gave twenty days for both sides to to make a written submission. She did. But I I did not submit anything additional in writing. I can if you want, but I I did not.
Yeah, I just, you know, for the future, it's helpful so that, you know, we can know about this stuff, you know, because we review prospective testimony as well as actual testimony, anticipation of a hearing like this. So I just, you know, under our constitution, our citizens are supposed to have open and free access to our courts. And, you know, this in well, injustice is not only jamming up lives of individuals, but our judicial system also. They're sitting on a file, and they're supposed to be closing this file. So thank you for coming for us here today, and Chairman, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Fishby. Representative Howard.
And I no questions, Mr. Chairman, just a moment. Welcome Attorney Commissar. His office is down in our district. The the incident occurred in North Stoneington in 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 our district. So I just want to welcome him and thank him very much for for coming here on behalf of his client to bring this attention to the committee. So good morning, sir. Welcome and thank you.
Thank you, Representative Howard. Nice to see you.
Thank you, Representative Howard. Comment a question from other members of the committee, comment or question. Seeing none, Mr. Commissar, Attorney Commissar, thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you, Senator. Appreciate it.
I see that Christine Ellie came in while we were talking to Mr. Commissar. Christine Ellie, you may testify. Are you able to testify? I see you there. Okay, well.
She's on mute, Mr. Yeah. I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Oh, there you are. All right, you may testify.
Hi, my name is Christine Eli, four twenty Parker Ave, South in Meriden, Connecticut. I am, I have had no guidance from my attorneys on what I'm doing right now. But I am going to take just a few minutes because I was concerned that my case was denied. And on October, I'm sorry, November twenty-eighth of two thousand and sixteen, this case is very old. I've had, I had a fall on my way to my finals at at the college on a cracked sidewalk. It was determined in the deposition that it wasn't even a a step. It was an actual ramp that had sunk down because it was cracked and through weather wear and tear, and it was quickly fixed after my fall. What happened on that day was I was rushed to the hospital with a with a dislocated shoulder with a full rotator tear with no health insurance. I spent a year and a half, a year and a half, until I was able to obtain employment full-time to get health insurance where I was probably dealt with after my probation period to have the rotator surgery. Since then, during that time, an onset of 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 some depression. Oh, my God. Hello? Oh, an onset of some depression, um, death, eight, living in, living in pain. A grandmother of seven not being able to do the things that I actively used to be able to do. And even though I've had the rotator surgery, the it still affects me to this day. I just wanted to testify that during that time. Gosh, I'm so sorry. I apologize. My phone keeps ringing. I should have put on Do Not Disturb. I'm just scared. I'm I'm under the worst legal guidance I have ever had, but because it was a state case, I had felt no choice but to remain with them. I'm epically family right now at my testimony, but all I can tell you is that it was the longest eighteen months of my life during that time. I was bedridden, had to sleep in a recliner almost nightly. My relationship began to fall to pieces because I was in chronic pain, and because I don't like medicine, because I still have to work and function every day. I actually worked for the state of Connecticut. It was a terrible loss of a period of time when it was already found in the deposition that it was definitely an issue of the school not repairing the ramp, which at that time, because it was sunk and appeared to look like a step, I tripped over the cracked part of the pavement with no desire to do so. I was just on my way to finals. So I just wanted to share that because I feel at this point through this case, I've been just representing myself anyways. And thanks for letting me, allowing me just a few minutes to share that. I really desired for this to be turned around because I just feel like I've lost hold of everything under this representation, and this really was real. It's all in this deposition of what happened. And even the state of Connecticut employs a CCSU admitting that there was some negligence on their part of not not fixing that ramp and leaving that crack there, which was immediately fixed after my fall. Thank you for giving me the time to share.
Thank you. Christine, is your last name Eli?
It's Eli. I just got married, but I'm still moving it into my legal name per se, but it's Eli.
I didn't want to mess up your name. So so, Miss Eli, let me let me just address one thing before I give it to Representative Fishby. I I know how you feel about your testimony. You didn't, you can't, you can't fail. This is your opportunity to tell your story. So you're not, you're not failing. I know how important this is to you, but I just want you to know that. I know how people sometimes come here and feel like they had a task to to accomplish for themselves, and they didn't. I think you did a great job. Representative Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Christine, I I share the statements of the chair. Just trying to figure out, understand that you have an attorney and and, you know, I don't want to know what your attorney has told you or, you know, because you have a privilege there, and I don't want to pierce that. And unfortunately, your lawyer's not here today. But what's your understanding? Did you read the decision of the Claims Commissioner, the office that denied your claim?
No, I was just told that it was denied and and then encouraged that it was going to be a Hail Mary if I even tried to do anything about it. And there's nothing really that I can do because I don't do this stuff. I'm not used to, I'm not, this is my first time ever trying to say, hey, I wasn't negligent, CCSU was. I've never done, I don't have a long history of suing anybody. Nothing. I've never sued anybody. Yeah, go ahead.
So that's all you were told is that it was denied and that it would be a difficult case to to pursue.
And they said, if you, after they discouraged me, they said, if you want me to file a blah, 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 I will go ahead and do that, but they're going to probably, and then, you know, and I said, because I wasn't happy with my representation, I said, file it. Just file it because I'm not just going to sit down and go, sure, okay, file it because I'm the one who suffered. No one else suffered. I suffered. And and that's what S this is, and that's all I've heard. I haven't heard from them in almost two years.
And what's your understanding of what was going to get filed on your behalf?
Um, to they didn't even really tell me. It was something to do with the to to question the decision, maybe?
Okay.
I don't know.
And how how did you find out about today's proceeding?
Um, I got an email on on Monday saying that you've been, you've been brought up, you know, on the list or whatever, and you need, I don't know what a testimony is going to do because they're probably going to do this, this and that. But if you feel that's what you want to do, then you can go ahead and click that. And then they, you know, you can show up that day. And then when I clicked, I found out that I had to actually apply. So I did that on my own, registered.
So that so that email, that came from the state, right?
No, it came from the attorney. I think the email, I think the state wrote my attorney because I had representation on this case.
Okay. And then your your attorney forwarded you whatever the state sent them, saying, you know, do what you want to do with this.
He gave the link. He didn't anything from them. He gave me the link. I went on the link and I read. And the link said, if I wanted to, I need to register, and that's what I did. And I'm winging it. I don't know what I'm doing. I'm sorry.
All right, well, that's fine. I, you know, I'm just trying to get to the, because I, you know, I don't have the denial itself before me. I haven't, you know, I haven't seen that document at this point. So, you know, I am going to take a look. And I know that other members of this committee are going to take a look at what's going on. But I just want to tell you that, you know, just because you have an attorney-client relationship, you are not bound to just deal with that that lawyer. I mean, I take cases from other other lawyers all the time. So, you know, I I invite you to, you know, use your freedom, you know, perhaps call someone else who would want to look at this case and see where it is. But, you know, I'm, you know, I made some notes here, and I'm going to look at what's actually going on here. And, you know, because unfortunately, I don't know the basis of the denial. And and the Claims Commissioner could have been right. I mean, there's, there's certain, there's a certain high bar to being able to sue the state.
True.
That's the process for the Claims Commissioner. And, you know, bad things happen every day. But not everything is actionable against the the bad individual in our civil courts. So but that's, I got to do some homework here. So I just wanted to ask you those questions, and thank you for coming and, you know, great job today. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I appreciate it.
Representative Fishby, Representative O'Dea.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, man, for your testimony. Just real quick. Do I understand that you tripped on what you thought was a stair and it was a a crack?
No, I stepped down from the stair, which really wasn't a stair. It was supposed to be a ramp. And the sidewalk is like this, so the crack caught my boot. There was a crack in the in the broke ramp. It cracked, and I tripped, and I went airborne and landed on my shoulder.
Okay, so was it the the the, were you, well, I don't want to, again, I don't want to have any conversations, you divulge any conversations to your attorney. But you gave testimony at the here, the deposition?
Yes, yes, two depositions, actually.
Oh, so you were deposed twice?
Yes, because the second time they invited the CCSU staff, the maintenance staff and workers. So that was the second one. I may be wrong with my language because the first one was just between me, the Claims Commissioner, and my attorney. The second one was with the staff from the CCSU.
Okay. So, all right.
Or maybe one, maybe one. I don't know. Sorry.
All right. All right. Thank you very much, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Great, okay.
Thank you, Representative. Representative Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Miss Eli, I'm one of the Meriden representatives. You don't, you don't live in my district, but I just wanted to thank you for coming forward and telling your story. Pardon?
I live in Meriden.
Yes, I know that, but you're not quite in my area. But in any event, thank you for coming out and and letting us know what has happened here. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, guys, for listening. I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Representative Quinn. Any further comment or question for members of the committee? Senator Kissel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I just oh, I'm on, okay. Thank you very much, Chairman Winfield. I just want to reiterate what I stated earlier, that it's for those of folks who are watching on CPTN, it's really important that if you have a matter on that's a disputed claim or something that you're not happy with what took place before the Claims Commissioner's office. You know, we have this day as the legislature, and it's really important to to suit up and show up. And I appreciate you taking the time, and that always is, that extra effort is incredibly important because without anybody coming and talking to us, we have, you know, we just have, you know, my view is that I have to be very deferential to the Claims Commissioner's process. And if I don't see anybody that takes the time to come before this committee, then I, my assumption is everything's A-OK. It may not be, but how else could I infer without people taking the time to come and talk to us? So it's really important, even though we're in this Zoom era right now. And I want to thank you for taking the time to come and inform our committee as to what took place.
Thank you so much. Great day. Thank you for your service.
Thank you, Senator Kissel. Comment or question from other members of the committee, comment or question? I see none. Miss Eli, I want to thank you for joining us this morning. And as I said before, you did just fine. And in fact, because you are here, as Representative Fishby suggested, people will look more deeply into this and see if there's something that we can discover. So you've done your service this morning. Appreciate you for joining us.
You so much. All right. You guys have a good day. I can leave now?
Yes, you may.
All right.
Next, we will hear from Theodore Oskowski. I'm trying not to mess your name up.
Thank you, sir. Can you see me? Am I on video?
I, no, we just hit a black box for you.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I I apologize for that. I didn't start that. Good morning, members of the committee or or judiciary. I appreciate your time. My name is Theodore Oskowski. I reside at seventy-nine Governor Hill Road, Oxford, Connecticut, oh, six, four, seven, eight. I am not sure of the status of our claim, number two, five, three, eight, nine. As receiving information from the state has been slow, understandably so with the pandemic. So I'll present our claim to you. Again, it's number two, five, three, eight, nine. We had a technical school enter into a contract with my wife and me at our home to construct an outdoor kitchen. We entered into contract in two thousand and thirteen, and it was to be completed in two phases. Phase one was to complete the structures, which were going to be a barbecue pit, an island, and a fireplace. And phase two was to complete the and install pavers for the decking and the flooring. All designs were done by the Bullard Havens Technical High School drafting department. A copy of the original contract we have never received, and it was never provided to us as homeowners, even when we requested it for this claim. Um, and it was never provided to us as homeowners, even when we requested it for this claim. Um, the second contract um was actually breached by the district because it was only signed by one of the homeowners and it's a district a policy that both homeowners need to sign this contract in order for, you know, work and things to progress. Um, the second contract was signed on on March third, two thousand seventeen, roughly four years after the start of the project. I will say that it was a large project, um, a thirty by fifty outdoor kitchen. Uh, on a meeting held in October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, no resolution um was resolved um as how to complete the project. That meeting was held at Bullard Havens Technical High School. The instructor transferred to a different school on October twentieth, two thousand seventeen. Um, it is the belief of the plaintiff in the intention, the intentional actions of cementing up openings and not completing the project was done to frustrate the plaintiff as the teacher was transferring. This put Bullard Havens Technical High School in the position of not being able to complete any corrective work or most importantly, finish the project. We're seeking corrective measures for the following reasons. None of the structures, six piers, a chimney with two, two runs, a barbecue pit and an island, not a single structure was finished in four years of being on the site. None of the sites are symmetrical, level, plum, square, or flush. Some of them failed to meet any of those standards, others might meet one of those standards. The largest structure, our centerpiece, the fireplace, when we had um contractors come out to give us quotes on how to fix what was there, deemed the structure unsafe and advised us not to burn in the structure because the arch could fall out and collapse.
Mr. Oskowski, your your time is elapsed. If you could uh summarize what you're doing here today, there may be some questions or comments for you.
Okay, thank you. We're looking to um for corrective action. We we submitted a quote to be um compensated um because none of these structures meet industry standards. Um, the uh, the district provided us a reimbursement of a thousand dollars from the contracted price to settle the outcome, and we did not accept that. Um, it is clear, in in their intent was not to finish the job, it was to pull out without any completion.
Mr. Oskowski, I'm gonna go to Representative Fishby who has a comment or a question for you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, good morning, sir. Uh, sir, first so I could orient myself, on the agenda, where, what number are you?
I don't know what number I am. I know our claim is two, five, three, eight, nine.
Okay, do you know what resolution um this your particular matter is?
Well, we we certainly met the the timeline to file the complaint. There was uh.
The question was, do you know?
I know.
Okay, that's that's fine. That's the answer. So please.
Okay.
Um, so this contract that you're talking about, uh, well, under what name did you make a claim? Under your individual name or the name of business?
Individual, my wife, Jocelyn, who's also on this call right now, is the individual who filed the claim.
If I could interrupt for a second, it's uh item number fifty-four on the agenda.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so now, this, and I have to apologize, I was multitasking at the beginning, but this matter involves a contract on residential property or commercial property?
Residential property, sir.
Okay, and it was for improvements to that residential property?
It was for the construction of an outdoor kitchen. We had never, it was basically just open space until that.
Okay, it's not a, it's not a, it's an improvement, it's a residential property, okay?
Yes.
And and your contract was between you folks and the state of Connecticut or some branch? Who was the contract between?
With the Connecticut Technical High Schools and and being Bullard Havens being the school that was providing the services.
Okay, and the contracts of. Do you know if that contract was in compliance with the Home Improvement Contract or ZAP?
No, I do not. I know that the first part of the contract was in compliance with stool, school policy and standards. The second contract was not because the project was broken up into two phases.
Okay, and so these are essentially students at a school that are learning how to do this work and they're guided by an instructor. Is that fair to say?
Correct.
Okay. And what was the basis for denial of the claim?
I am uncertain of that, sir. Um, I didn't know that it has been denied. I, we went through the process in the last um documentation we received up until.
Hold on, hold on, stop. I I misspoke. Thank you. Um, so this is what's before us is they're asking for an extension of time to deal with your case.
Oh, I was, I I know that we're trying to, you know, get to the the finish line with this, so if that's the process, I, it must be. But we were told to show up here today.
Okay, so what's on our agenda is the Claims Commissioner is asking for more time to address your case. So with that understanding, what is the status of your case in that? When was the claim made to the state?
The claim was made on October sixteenth, two thousand eighteen.
And what has happened since October eighteen, uh, October of two thousand eighteen with regard to this claim?
Okay, we received notification that Darren Cunningham received the claim. Then we had a re- a response from the state on their position. I had to create, uh, write a rebuttal or my wife and I uh put a rebuttal together. And then, um, we waited and we waited and we waited until just recently, we received documentation that we were going to be allowed this hearing. Um, and again, never having done anything like this before, we weren't really sure of what the process was.
Okay, so there's been no hearing, uh, uh, there's been, other than the the filings, there's been no action, so to speak, in your file?
Not that I'm aware of, sir.
And were you, were you contacted by the Claims Commissioner uh indicating to you that the office needed more time to do something in your file?
Yes, they asked us, um, if we were in favor of an extension and we we responded yes and we submitted that paperwork. And then from that moment, the next thing we received is you need to register for this hearing date.
Okay, so what's before us here today is whether or not to grant you that extension uh or grant the Claims Commissioner that extension, I'm sorry. And based upon what you just said, it's my understanding that you do not object to that extension?
No.
Okay, um, well, with that, thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
May I ask one question, please?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, this, they started this in two thousand thirteen, they pulled out in the fall of two thousand seventeen. My wife and I would really like to move forward with the project. The reason we haven't is because we thought maybe someone would like to come by and just see the project for evidence. Is it okay if we proceed or is your rec?
Oh, that that would be along the lines of legal advice and and I don't, I I I don't represent you in this matter. But it begs the question, why are you agreeing to the extension? If you wanna bring this matter to a conclusion, then I, you know, why agree to the extension?
Oh, so you're telling me that if I don't agree with, they'll handle this matter quicker?
Well, I, you know, the Claims Commissioner is saying that they want more time. I can't tell you that they'll handle it quicker. What what may happen i- if, you know, you take a different position and perhaps we agree with that position um and we deny the additional time, the Claims Commissioner may deny your claim. Um, in which case you would have the ability to to appeal to us to overturn that for whatever reason. Uh, but, you know, it's probably to your best advantage to seek counsel of your own choosing to look at what's going on here, but based upon your position on the extension, um, I don't have a lot of other questions, so. Okay, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. Um, Senator Kessel.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Uh, thank you, sir, for coming in and testifying today. I'm just wondering, who told you to be here today? Was that our staff or was that someone in the Claims Commissioner's office?
No, that was from the Claims Commissioner's office. Um, uh, I believe Darren Cunningham is the person. Um, we received an email today, um, I'm just scrolling down right now to see who sent us the notification.
No, that's okay. I don't, I don't need to know who. I just wanted to know, like, which area? And uh, given their backlog, I think they have better things to do than advise you to come before us when they're merely asking for an extension. Uh, you've heard me this morning probably uh saying that it, the backlog is embarrassing to the state of Connecticut. Uh, and, you know, we as a committee and we as a legislature have given them more resources, more personnel, uh, and yet, you know, I I'm guessing that the the pandemic didn't help matters, I get it. Uh, but still, you know, given the ti- again, a very long timeframe, I would simply say this. I'm just one member of this committee. Uh, it's my intention to just, I I'm not a a new trier of fact, so given your testimony and their position, uh, all I can do is support the extension of time. Hopefully, it won't take, you know, another five years. Uh, but I will s- tell you this. If after that process, you get a final determination that you're not happy with, then you have to, again, object to that and come before us if you wanna try to get some other resolution. So that you may come before us at some point in the future. I hope that's not the case. I hope how this shakes out, you're happy with. Uh, but I think they're hearing us when when we say as a committee, please expedite these things in in a fair and equitable manner. And, you know, seven years is is just not really good. And it's, and it's crazy because, you know, on the Superior Court side, there's real pressure on the judges to move dockets and caseload, and their sort of like uh goal is like within a year to have some real motion. And over on the other side of the coin, you have the claims issue, and I'm hearing like five years, seven years, and you're just the group that happens to come before us this year. So thank you again for taking the time. Yeah, go ahead.
May I change my mind and say that I?
I'm not, again, I'm not gonna get like, like Representative Fishby said, I'm not gonna give you legal advice.
Okay.
Uh, that's, you know, you're here the way it is right now, uh, and you've already testified uh that you support this. And at some point, somebody's gotta make this initial determination one way or the other anyhow. So I'm gonna support the motion to extend the time because that's what's before me at this time. And that's what's before you, and hopefully it won't take another five years. I get it. Uh, luckily, you're not trying to move to like Florida or something like that. That would really make this messed up, but uh, I just wanted to say thank you for coming and taking the time. It's always worthwhile. Thank you.
We appreciate your time as well. Thank you.
Uh, Representative Fishby, your hand back up again?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Uh, go ahead.
Thank you, um. Sir, you know, I I gonna tell you, I I generally, I'm in opposition to the extension myself. Um, you know, part of the problem here, uh, well, first of all, Derek Cunningham is an Attorney General, uh, he's Assistant Attorney General. He works for the AG's office. So he doesn't, I don't know anybody of that name in the Claims Commissioner's office. Um, so they are the adversary. They are the lawyer who is uh representing the state against you guys, okay? The Claims Commissioner at this point is supposed to be a neutral. Uh, they are supposed to determine whether or not, you know, how to proceed based upon sovereign immunity and various statutes. Part of my problem here is that we set up a system last year to try and make it easier for the Claims Commissioner to dispose of cases like yours, um. And the Claims Commissioner is not here to testify why they need more time. So, uh, you know, I don't find that to be acceptable, and especially in this situation where you're saying, you know, you've got, your backyard is a mess and you're afraid to to get a reputable company in there and your life, I I'm sure every time you walk into the backyard, it's like PTSD, right?
It's, it's unpleasant, sir.
Absolutely, and and you're concerned about the destruction of evidence. And the only individual or or group that is preventing that PTSD is the Claims Commissioner's office, which is, uh, it's, it's just not fair. So, you know, that's where my thought process is on this. And, you know, there's a lot of other extensions on here today.
We're in full, we're in full support if you deny the the um extension. We would be grateful.
Can I say a few words here?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna be next.
Right, well, because you you aren't testifying together, we'll, we'll have you up right after.
Thank you.
First, you can proceed, Representative Fishby.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I just wanted to let you know where my head is at. So, you know, if we, if we deny that extension, you know, as I've seen with some other files, the Claims Commissioner's office sometimes just says, okay, we're gonna deny the claim. Um, you know, from there, then you enter, enter a different sort of thing, and that would be appealing the this, the decision of the Claims Commissioner to deny the claim. But at least something is progressing. Because right now, tomorrow, they could deny your claim and it could be a legitimate denial of your claim. In which case, you gotta get on with your life, with all due respect. Um, you know, but at least the PTSD, that kind of stuff could just go away. Um, so, anyway, uh, I wish you good luck and, um, thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Fishby. Comment or question from other members of the committee? Comment or question? If not, I I'll just say this, um, listening to the.
Please call the main office.
Sorry, I'm in school.
Listening to the exchanges between you and Representative Fishby, it seems to me that you you came here believing that what is on the agenda was in your favor. It seemed to me that that may have changed once Representative Fishby gave you some information. Um, I I I think you have now changed your position, but what I would say to you is you probably, as Representative Fishby suggested, uh, if it's possible, might want to uh seek uh advice that you cannot get from this committee. Um, and I know you're here to testify today, uh, but we're not voting on this tomorrow. Uh, you may want to seek some advice and clarify your position with the committee uh in the next week or so. If that's possible for you, because I don't want us to act upon what we believe to be your wishes, um, in addition to the information we have, it'd be acting in the wrong way. Um, so comment a question from other members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing none? Uh, thank you for joining us this morning, Mr. Oskowski, Oskowski, uh, and we'll next hear from Jocelyn Oskowski.
Hi, good morning and thank you for your time. Um, again, this is my first hearing and I'm a little nervous, so forgive me. Um, I just want you to know that uh my husband has great pride in the technical school and all the students there that work very hard on their projects. Um, he totally believes in them. And when we started this project, I just want you to know that it was supposed to be a showcase for Bullard Havens. And um it started out in two thousand and thirteen, of course, and I'll be really quick because I know I have my three minutes. Um, unfortunately, what they, what Bullard Havens had designed for the backyard um uh was amazing. Um, they built over my garden, my vegetable garden, and I think over the years when nothing was being completed, um, it was, it was really frustrating. And I had asked to meet with uh the teacher, the supervisor, and to try to figure out how we could move along with the project. But after they pulled out and I asked my husband if we could get estimates on um on trying to complete the project, because you have to realize our backyard. On trying to complete the project because you have to realize our backyard has stones and what it looks like. It's a horrible mess. It's also dangerous, um, for, for company when they come over. So. I, what. And I said to Ted, do we go see an attorney or what? But what we just wanted, I wanted, was just. To have something that's usable. I don't care about the island. I don't care about the patio. I don't care about any of that stuff. I just want something. To be completed, something that's safe. Um. And something that we could use. Our son left for the military. He's active duty. And we couldn't even have a going away party in the backyard for him. Because of this mess. So I guess maybe. I don't know, we're in the right place today to, to, to come to you and to express how we feel on this whole project. Or, um, I'm just totally confused and frustrated, so, um. I just want it, I, I just want it cleaned up. I, I mean, I, I want it fit, usable and safe. That's all I'm asking. So I don't know if we need another five years for us to look at the backyard. And, and see all the rubble. I mean, it's, it looks like, um. It, it's a pile of mess. That's what it is. And, and you, everybody is welcome to come out. I mean, obviously I can't cook out there or give you a barbecue. But if you came out and you just saw the project, you have to understand where we're coming from and, um. You know, I, I, that's, that's all I have to say, uh. Uh, Dr. Hilliard, that was in the meeting at school, he was trying to rectify the situation and, and. And, uh, and the site supervisor at the time who no longer works there. He was, um. He was just, uh, very unprofessional and raised his voice and, and said, oh, well, we've been on this project for X amount of years and. And nothing is done and we're, we're done. And then, and then he wrote us a check. So. That's what I'm just trying to say. I don't know if we're in the right place or how to handle this, or if we have to get an attorney or what, but, um.
This, Ms. Oskowski, so your, your time has elapsed. Um, uh, none of us are experiencing what you're experiencing, but I think we have a sense of what you're attempting. To say, I know that there are some, uh, comments or questions from members of the committee, so I'm gonna allow them to engage, uh, starting with Representative Quinn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I may have missed this if your husband said it, but was there a written contract for this job?
Yes.
There, yes.
Excuse me, I'm on. And, um, yes, there was, and I even asked for it at the meeting. I've also written emails to, uh. I don't know if I can say his name, Mr. Mencio, um, and also a secretary, uh, and they couldn't locate it at the time. They only had the second contract for phase two. Um. And, and a copy of her check, but that's, that's about it. We've, we've supplied them with everything they possibly needed, porta potties, um. Anything they asked for, we supplied it and. And we have a lot of material there, so, um, on the property.
Was there a, a firm? Uh, in date in the contract of, of when they were supposed to be complete with this?
Um, I don't remember.
Okay, sir.
Mr. Oskowski, hold on, um, we're gonna let Ms. Oskowski answer the questions.
Okay.
Because she will testify.
I just know that there was two phases, um, and I under, completely understood that there wasn't a, a timeline on it because, um, it was a learning project as well. So. No, they, they didn't say we were gonna get this completed by two thousand and fifteen, um. So.
And, and how did this all come to be? Had you approached the school or had the school approached you or was it some sort of general solicitation?
No, actually, um. We knew the, the teacher and my husband works for the, the school system as well. Um, we have spoken to, I work for a high school in Waterbury and, and my husband does as well. Um, not in Waterbury, but. What happened was all of us got, you know, supervising proms and everything, everybody talks and speaks and stuff and. And I think my husband had a discussion with, uh, the teacher at the time and, and he was the one that, that suggested it. Uh. Not me. I just was happy with my garden, but, um, that, that was about it.
Okay. All right, uh, thank you. I appreciate your time and appreciate you both coming out to, uh, testify today. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Representative O'Day.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and thank you, man, for your testimony. Um, sorry you and your husband are going through this, and I hope. And I believe the rest of this committee is as angry and upset. At, uh, the Claims Commissioner process, uh, as I am. Um, how much? Uh, money have you, did you spend to date on this project?
Um, let's see here, I am not too sure. I know that we sent, my husband sent a form out to, um. Ted, did you, did you send a format? I don't know.
Last page.
On how much?
Currently, right now, just on masonry, um, work seventeen thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars. And fif, and two cents. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, uh, Ted and Justin, we're, we're sorry this happened and, uh. Hopefully, justice will prevail one way or the other, sooner than later. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative, uh, Representative Fishman for the second time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Jocelyn, thank you for coming here today. Jocelyn, I'm gonna say, um. Next week. Find a lawyer. Does, does home improvement contract work? Okay? Next week, find a lawyer who does home improvement contractor work. That's all I have to say. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Representative Fishman. Good advice. Um, comment a question from other members of the committee. Comment or question. Seeing that, thank you both for joining us, uh, this morning.
Thank you.
Next, we will hear from Kimberly Rice.
Good, good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Rice. I don't know if you know this. We cannot see you. If you can come on camera, please do. If not, please proceed.
I, um, wanted to, just to start by saying, unfortunately, I was hospitalized by COVID. And for three weeks, and my voice has been severely impacted as a result. So I'm going to require a lot of. Patience while I'm speaking due to these issues that I'm currently dealing with. I wanted to start by saying, uh, thank you for allowing me to testify, um, against the Commissioner's decision to deny my claim. I'm sorry, I'm not better prepared, but I did not know about today's hearing until yesterday when I was notified. So I had, did not have a proper time to prepare, and, uh, this too concerns me because this is my final stop. I bought my home in two thousand and seven, and I've had a series of sewage backups. That are, wow, they are destroying me financially, mentally, emotionally, and, uh, uh, physically. Um, my brother, who lived with me, passed away from asthma in, uh, two thousand and twenty. His asthma was exacerbated by the moldy wet conditions in my basement caused by a state-owned tree located in the front of my house. Which is what is causing the sewage backups. He, I want you to know that he was, uh, involved with an organization called Putting on Heirs. And he complained to them about my basement. In addition to his loss of life, the tree root has caused me greater financial and a personal property lies, uh, per, perfect, personal or property loss and threatens my health. Since we last met, I have had six backups. I've lost my homeowner's insurance and now I'm. With the Connecticut Fair Plan. The Connecticut Fair Plan does not cover my basement. Uh, I've. I'm so sorry. Please, uh, bear with me. The only way to resolve this issue is to replace the pipe on the state highway. The pipes from my house to the street are fairly new. But the pipes in the state highway that runs in front of my house is what needs to be replaced. The tree is encroaching on my pipes, belongs to the state. Where the rocks and roots from this tree still remain in my pipes today. I have no authority over the trees causing the damage because it doesn't belong to me. It belongs to the state. The cost to fix the problem is more than twenty-three thousand dollars, and that is a quote, quote given to me in two thousand and fifteen. I don't know what today's quote would be in the, in, uh, COVID. Uh huh. My neighbor has also complained about this tree. She complained about the branches on her roof and the DLT. They came out and they took care of those branches for her. Pictures of the trees show utility wires running through the top and middle of the tree. After the work I located, after, after a month of work, I too located responsible party, which was the State of Connecticut DLT. I'm so, so sorry, I'm trying to rush. I apologize for it. I just want you to know that in December of two thousand and twenty-one, I had my sixth backup. This backup was brutal. It was considered a category four. This backup happened unfortunately in the winter months, which caused my boiler to break. Which then caused my pipes to burst. And I had to leave my home. And when I'm supposed to be recovering from, with my lungs are from COVID. I had to spend more than twenty thousand dollars out of pocket to pay for this. And the worst part is, I can't.
I, I, I think, I think, uh, we. You're, you're well over the time, and I know.
It's hard, I can't.
I know, I know this impacted you severely.
Yes.
What I, what I would like to do is see if there are questions or comments from members of the committee. Uh, so that we can, uh, you know, tease out some of the facts of, of, of your case. So I'm going to go to Representative Fishman, who has his hand up, and he'll, uh, engage with you.
Hi, Kim. Good morning.
Good, 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 good morning.
It's okay. I'm sorry to hear about your medical situation. Um, Kim, do you know why? The state denied your claim?
They keep saying it's an act of a God, but the state has a policy called the right to tree, right to place. And this tree is not in the right place, and it's a causing me harm. They said my pipes are old, but my neighbor's house is even older. She doesn't have roots in her, in her, her, her pipes. She doesn't have this situation because of her, that a tree is not close to her house. It's a close to mine. That has wires going through, through it, wires from, uh, the electrical company because it's not in the right place.
Okay, good. So you said that the roots, uh, from the tree are in your pipe, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So has some, has, has somebody ran, um, a, a camera through the pipe?
Yes, and they are still there. They are stuck in the turn. Or the turnout, where the street that turns into the main sewer line, it's stuck in that area. And no, no, nobody can get it out.
And, and what happened? Like, is it, um, when do you get these backups? Is it from? Build up in your home that it can't get out?
Um, I, I'm thinking, well, what I know is that every time they do go in and there's a small gap, a tiny, tiny hole, by the grace of a God. Where those rocks and roots are that my home, uh, can, the, the, uh, sewage from my home passes through. It's not a full opening. It's a small opening that's there from what I was shown on camera. And what keeps happening is the tree keeps growing and causing problems in the pipe. From my house to the street, it is a brand new pipes, but once you go into the street, it is more than the twenty thousand dollars to replace. And again, this is started for me in a two thousand and fifteen. Uh, this is a problem.
Then, Kim, what town do you live in?
I live in Strat, Stratford.
Okay. And you said that you first made your claim in two thousand and fifteen?
Two thousand and sixteen. I did not know where to go or who to address it. That too, and I, for a while, was, uh, going back and forth with the town, and they were the ones who eventually told me. That is not a town road. That is a state highway. It's Route One. So the state is the. This, this, I'm so sorry, is the, uh, responsible party.
Okay, no problem. And since two thousand and sixteen, when you put in the claim. Um, what has the Claims Commissioners Office done with you? What have they asked you for?
Uh, so we had the hearing, I believe, it was March two thousand eighteen. And, uh, then I had to go before you guys to ask you to extend my claim because the commissioner let, let the time run out. And then last year, she just denied it when she was granted the time. And.
So you had a hearing in March of two thousand and eighteen? But you didn't get a decision until twenty twenty-one?
Uh, yes. And then I was told I.
Do you recall, do you recall what month in twenty twenty-one?
I, I, I would be remiss if I could tell you a straight date. I don't know the date. And I did not know about today either. I, I just got a call from Representative Gresko saying your date is tomorrow, and that was it. So I'm sorry, I'm not prepared. I had no idea about today. I never received a letter or even an email or anything saying that you have a hearing tomorrow.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, don't be, I mean, I think you're very well prepared. So, you know, you've given us a lot of information here today. And, you know, kudos to you on such short notice that you're able to, to do this, and especially, you know, with your, your speeching, speaking situation. So, uh, I think I have enough information, and I thank you for coming here today, um. You know, not many people do, um, and to your credit, you are here. So, thank you and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Representative.
Thank you so much.
Comment or question from other members of the committee? Comment or question? Seeing that, uh, Ms. Rice, I, I want to thank you as well for joining us, and, and I know how much impact this has, particularly given your recent medical issues. Um, I want you to know that the committee, um, is taking your testimony, and we're gonna look into the issue. Um, and I, I wish you, you well. Uh, thank you for this morning.
Okay, thank, thank you.
Uh, next, we have Karen Jackson. Karen Jackson?
Hi, can you see me?
Uh, do see you. You may testify.
Hi, how are you? Um, good morning. Um, first, if I could be given a few seconds, I would like to thank Ms. Blanchard. For helping me step by step to get to this process. I'm not, I'm naive when it comes to registering. I didn't know anything about that, and she taught me something, so I want to thank her for that. Um, the reason I'm ca, I am. Testifying, um, the, the committee doesn't have my claim on file because my claim is less than forty-nine thousand dollars. Uh, because I'm told by statute, you only, the committee only sees claims fifty thousand dollars and up. And I found out a problem, um. Um, because it, it, it violates, um, the, the, the Constitution, I think, as section one, that says that you have to equally.
Miss, are you, so you're not testifying to something that's on the agenda today?
No, I'm not testifying with, I, I, I'm, I'm testifying to a claim. I'm testifying to the fact that. My claim that was denied by the Commissioners Office, I mean, the Claims Commission, cannot be heard by the.
Okay, so. You, you need to be. I understand your issue. That is not handled through this process here. You, you should be testifying to one of the issues on the agenda. If you have. An issue such as yours, what I would advise you to do. Uh, is to engage with myself and/or Chairman Staffroom and maybe the ranking members. To figure out if there's a way to deal with that because the committee's not gonna be able to do. Uh, anything with it, with what you're, what you're saying to us today. We have to have that conversation and figure out. What the resolution is and how to guide you. You understand what I'm saying?
Kind of.
Kind of. I think, I, I think you might not want to, I get, I get it, I get it. But, uh, Ms. Jackson, what I, what I will do is I will, we have your information, I assume?
Yes, you do. Yes, you do, sir. Ms. Blanchard surely does.
Uh, after the, after the hearing, I, I will reach out to you. Uh, and have a conversation with you about what your issue is and see, uh, if there's a way that we can find some resolution for you.
Will do.
And you will. Absolutely. Absolutely. Um. Is there anyone who was signed up who has not testified? Anyone who was signed up who has not testified? I will ask that one more time. Anyone who was signed up? Who has not had the opportunity to testify? If not, I believe that brings us to a close with the people who are signed up for today, um. And unless my co-chair or one of the ranking members has something to, uh, put on the record, I think we will send up Senator. Representative Staffroom.
Sorry, uh, Mr. Chair, I was a little late this morning joining, so if nobody has done so yet. I think it is appropriate that we wish you a very happy birthday today, um. As you turn the ripe old age of thirty-two again, uh.
Yeah, right.
So, we, uh, we.
Wow, gets younger and younger.
We wish, we wish you a happy birthday, sir, and, um, we're glad to be out of here. Very early so that you can go celebrate it with, uh, your beautiful family.
Thank you very much. I think that will bring us to a close unless anyone else seeing none. Enjoy the rest of your Friday. All right.
Good Friday, everyone. Have a nice weekend.